I'm gonna address the camera. I think we should call this meeting to order.
With a roll call?
With a roll call, thank you.
Brian?
I'm here.
Cam? Deb?
Here.
Tyler's not here yet, and John's not here yet. Uh-huh. Oh, there's Tyler.
Tyler is here, perfect. Everyone's so tan. Alright. So the first order of business is to approve the agenda. Do I have a, what's it called? A motion?
It's a second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oh.
Alright. Let's do it. I don't know what else I can do beyond this, other than I think that... This is the work session, which we're talking about district goals.
Yeah, so maybe I'll just kick it off, Carrie, if that's alright?
Of course.
So, the four of us have been meeting throughout this summer to come up with a general framework for some goals, long-term goals for our district. And they're, I would say, fairly wide in their scope. And that's because, right now, we really just have a small group of people working on them. And we need more input in order to kind of further define them. We wanted to get them in front of the board for your review, and also for the administrative team, so we can really kind of talk about these, maybe scope them out, ask questions, et cetera. It is not, it is purposely not very detailed. And that's because, part of what I'm proposing in the next meeting is a slight change to our policy, which would be kind of using this year to further develop our goals and refine them, and come up with that added detail. So, this is just the start, but I think it's important that we get this in front of people, get feedback. Are we directionally correct again? Is there something here that you would take off? That kind of... So that's the feedback that we're looking for.
So we've seen these all before.
Yeah. Well, you have not. There's actually one new one that was not there.
Perfect, that is where I'm going. Excellent. Would you be able to walk us through sort of the big differences I think you kind of talked about?
Yeah, I'll just do the very, the big differences, and then I want to make sure that other people, I mean Carrie and Cam and Lindsay have a chance to talk to, because this was definitely a joint effort. There are four, four goals, if you will. And I don't know, I hesitate to even call these goals, because they're kind of like higher... Oh, shoot. You know, they're just a little bit more broad than maybe a goal. So, of these, we might develop and pinpoint something more specific. The first one we talked about before, and that is our Portrait of a Graduate goal. Developing that work, getting community support, kind of furthering that effort. We talked about that the last time. The second one is the, I guess what we're calling now the cognitive engagement goal? Is that correct? We kind of, we were using the word engagement before, and I think we realized that, in some cases, that was not really very clear. There's, there's more than one kind of engagement. This is the cognitive engagement, where we're talking about higher-order learning, the IPR stuff. That again, that was there the last time we were here. The third goal, if you scroll down a little bit, Gail, is, this is the added goal. This is more along the lines of the emotional engagement. And I think when we brought this to the board last time, when we talked about it, it kind of felt like, some of the comments from the board, maybe that was something that was missing. We were using the term engagement just broadly, and I think some people were really talking about more culture, emotional engagement, and some were talking about cognitive engagement. So we, we split the two. And this is where, I think this is the first time you're seeing that, so of course we need feedback specifically on that goal. And the fourth one is the planning responsibly. So again, a goal that you've seen. This is where we're just really looking at the resources that we have, and making sure that we are being creative in our use, so that we can make the best of the resources that we have. Again, that's a one that we had before. So that, that's, in a nutshell, I guess that's the high-level overview, would you say? I think we obviously plan to go in more detail with each of these. But I might let Carrie or... I just got from, I just drove from Des Moines, and I'm like, ooh. Maybe like Carrie and Lindsay speak a little more to these. We can all kind of chime in. The one thing I would say is, this is a working session, so obviously we want to have back-and-forth conversation, but it might be nice if we can get through these four, maybe at medium level, and just kind of lay them out in more detail, and then have, you know, have questions and conversation about it. I just worry that we might get caught on one and kind of go down a rabbit hole. We won't get through all of them. So, with that, does anybody have any... Are you opposed to that, or is that okay? Can we take that approach? Okay. With that said, I don't know, do you want to kick off the first one?
I'd start with, yes. I can start with the first one, which is really on that work, Portrait of a Graduate. And, just, I think it says, like it says, revamping, really looking at the instructional practices that we're using. And that's not just through this, but I mean, the second goal of committing to engage learners would also, I mean, they're very well tied together. But, um, when it says learn, and learning to produce graduates, reflect the needs of our community. Now, when we say Portrait of a Graduate, the work that we're going to be doing is not just at the high school. I mean, it's preschool on up. So we, we have some timelines in here on the fact that, you know, we have to finish our work on, you know, building those vision points. When we say vision points, we're talking about those words, those five, seven words, that, that we worked on in a work session together, and we've done it to other stakeholders. What we took into Siak, we've done it, the teachers have done it. Um, we had some of our certified staff, or non-certified staff, have done it also. One of the things that we mulled around was getting, doing, getting a little bit more community involvement on that piece before we totally solidified that. Because, um, those words really need to be, I mean, those words are going to drive everything we do. It should be driving what our mission is. If they're not part of our mission, which right now they wouldn't, I mean, they wouldn't be, because we haven't, our mission is older. Part of that work would probably look at, in part of one of the other goals, I think we did have, relooking at our mission statement. And vision points would be where we, where we hope, where we want those kids to be. So, when you see up here, and it says, "Define vision points and identify benchmarks for grade spans", that's going to be work that's going to happen in all of our buildings with our teachers. We're going to have to name, what does that look like in a classroom? We're gonna, and if we expect it, we're going to have to teach it. Where is that being taught? Where is that happening? And then what kind of feedback are we giving students on that? Because if it's something that we feel is important, we have to give kids feedback on what that looks like and how they're doing in that area. And then, if they're doing great, that's great, but if they're not, what kind of support are we going to offer to those kids that struggle with, whatever those, you know, where those areas are? The thing about that is, we're gonna, so then we identify learning outcomes for each benchmark. So, you're not going to do that maybe grade-specific, but you're going to look at grade spans, which would be buildings. So what does, if it's collaboration, what does collaboration look like at the elementary level? What does collaboration look like at the high school? Buildings will get together and do that defining, but then we're going to have to come together as a district, because we've got to make sure that as we look at, and we're progressing, are we, do we have like this, or are we doing some of this? So we'll, we'll do some work, we'll do some critiquing and revising by coming back together as a whole. And we'll be doing exactly what we want kids to be doing in their classroom. We'll be going through that, that creative process, where you define it, then you're going to, you know, do some work with it, then you're going to come back and get some feedback. Then you'll continue on, come back and get some feedback. In that, we will also then be creating, once we've got those learning targets, those learning outcomes, we're going to have to create a scope and sequence for what that instruction's going to look like. Kind of a master scope and sequence for our district, as to where these things are happening and when the instruction will be. Because like I said before, if that is a learning outcome, we are going to have, there's going to be, we can't just say, oh, well, why talk about that when we're getting ready to walk down the hallway? You know, quiet voices, or, you know, be ready, safe, kind. We still have to teach that at some point. And then, developing those assessments or works and surveys, so that, for each outcome, so the students can see how they're doing. And then, based on that data that we, you know, that we have, then we, you know, what kind of redesign are we going to have to do on curriculum and instruction? But those things will be happening along the way. But we would expect that that, 2020, 21, as you can see how we've mapped that out, that would be the big focus of that time. Now, that's just saying, those are, that's a timeline. We all know with a timeline, depending on how that work goes, you're gonna, some of it you're going to have to continue to come back and revisit, and others, you'll be done with, and then you move on to the next step.
And I, I'm sorry.
No.
Okay, so, and this was one, too, a couple of things that you, you mentioned, kind of brought this up. The two bullet points, the first two are the ones that we would be focusing on this year, which is, you know, I call them pillars. I don't think that's necessarily accurate, but what's the best word for it? I hate to just keep saying words. What are our words? But what are our vision points, et cetera, that we have? So this is not just necessarily in the classroom, although, obviously, that's a very important aspect of it. But this is, these would be for our district, so...
If we expect our, our students to be collaborators, we have to model that same thing, as, as teachers and as, as patrons of the district when, when people are in the building. Our cooks can model that, our bus drivers can model that. Whatever those words that we say are, come out as important to our community, collaborating, communicating, showing empathy, how are, how is that happening across the district, whether you're a student or you're a staff member?
Or a board member.
Or a board member. That's exactly right.
You know, in the areas.
Us, sitting here at this table, too. What does that look like?
Parent volunteers, yeah.
All those, everything that we've just named. If they're, if those are important, if what we say are as important for our students, we have to be modeling that also. So, thinking about, I have my own, you know, I have this vision in my head that, at some point, could we tie this to, you know, I hate to say evaluation, but really, it is. I mean, are you, are you modeling that? Are you doing that daily in what you do when you're working with students? And when you're working with adults? So it's kind of a, really, it looks at how do we do business as Gilbert?
You've heard Deb and Carrie both say, though, it's important that we get community input on this. And we have had quite a bit, but that's not to say that we couldn't get more out of that. The other thing that I like about some of the things that are available to us, if you take a look at that first bullet, and it talks about utilizing the EdLeader 21 consults, we have some support there. Matter of fact, I don't know, how many of us are going to that? Is there five, six? Six of us are going to the conference for EdLeader coming up at, I believe, the end of September, which I think will be a great conference, and we'll bring back some information towards that. The other one, and I think that the peer review, one of the things that we've had an opportunity, and I don't know if this is where we're going with that part of it, is the fact that we've become a part, I don't care, is there a name for that group?
Is it like a consortium?
It's, it's, we like a consortium, but we're not paying money. It's, it's really a group of districts that have come together that are in the same situation that we're in. We're very like-minded in the fact of we've all, most of us have become members of EdLeader 21, because we're, we have the same questions. Okay, we, we are here, how do we get to, how are you getting to this next level? How are you doing this work? So what we're doing is, we're coming together every other month, and for the, we just got together beginning of August, and two districts brought a rough draft of their strategic plan. And then the other districts, we split up into two groups, and the rest of us just gave, you know, gave feedback. And we had a very strict protocol that we were following, but, you know, they had time to, to share their plan with us. Then we had, you know, time to ask questions, and then we had time to give feedback. And then they had time to clarify. But, um, those are the kinds of things we have to have through all those steps, just like we want students to, to be critiquing and revising. We have to be asking, I don't know that there's a specific place in there where we say, oh, here's the time that we would bring somebody in. Really, as we're going through that work, then we're going to say, okay, hey, now we need to, let's have an outside person just come in and look at this work, and see, get some feedback from them at that time. So I think that it's a continuous process in that respect, in that peer review, and then, and bringing... We, I mean, we could bring somebody to come in if we want to do that, but I don't know that right now would say, today, you know, now is the time to do that. Because I think right now, we have the path that we're on, so we could bring somebody in right at this moment, but I don't know if that would be as helpful to us as when we get to, you know, I mean, we're gonna, I do think we'd want to bring somebody in when we are ready to relook at our mission. I think just to help facilitate that, that conversation, that dialogue across the community. But, um, anyway, go ahead, sorry.
The last, um, yeah, and then, absolutely. The last thing I think I wanted to, that third bullet point, this might be a good place to, um, I think it will be a good place to maybe even consider using a similar model that we have for our building, to bring in some groups, some teams that can kind of help do this work as well. Yeah. Go ahead. I want to make sure that we're able to get through all of them, so hopefully.
All four?
Yeah.
You want to do that first?
Yeah, is it a hard, I mean, if it's something fast, then maybe we can just do it.
Well, I just, I guess for purposes of maybe just remarking, because we did the one work session where we did the work mapping in here, right?
Yeah.
So, um, if I understand this goal, I mean, it's basically putting all of the weight on those words, those selected words.
Once we have, once we...
We have to figure out what those words are.
Once we have got them totally nailed, and we do the defining of them, then the work goes, then all of that work stems just from that, you're right, Heather.
And it's five to seven words, right? So is this EdLeader 21, are they experienced in that approach?
Yes.
Or is that the approach that they recommend, or?
That's exactly where we, they have a, what they call a three-year roadmap, that, that kind of helps you guide you through that work, and that's exactly where we got this. I mean, we're not reinventing the wheel here.
Right. So that, that was going to be, I guess, my question, or my point was, if we don't want to have to reinvent the wheel. I thought I heard you say at the beginning that we would utilize them for consults, and then at the end you were saying we may not until later in the process.
Well, I think, no, I think it depends on where we say, when we're, when we feel like, okay, we need to have another critical eye come in and look at this.
Yeah, so, so I'm just throwing out for my, my point on this, and then we can go on, is I think early in the process is a good point to bring in a third party, just to frame it up and help us all. Because if, if the point is, there's five to seven key words that make this unique to Gilbert, and that's what we're going to do all the rest on, my suggestion is, bring them in sooner rather than later, to help us with, have we looked at the groups, which it looks like that would be the first area, right? Have we looked at the groups, and do we feel like these are...
I, I think it's, it's a, I understand your point. It's something where we have, we always just call them, right? We want to be, this is something where you got to do your homework first. You need to come prepared to talk about what's meaningful to your district and all of that. Really, there's been some involvement already with these conferences, and, not conferences, but every other month, getting some feedback. So, yeah, we'll bring them in. It's, um, we're just not going to say, yeah, how soon.
Well, let me just stay from my seat, anyway. I don't disagree with goal number one and, and the approach. I think Lindsay's point about bringing in the community is important. And as a board member, I'd want to see that EdLeader 21 on the front end to help frame it up, so that we know where we're going before we go, well, here's our long-term goal, number one, and two years into it, we bring EdLeader 21.
And this is what they have been doing with EdLeader.
I'm just saying, I'm just saying at the board level.
Absolutely.
I, I probably won't make it to any of those work sessions as a board member, to be comfortable with that. I'd like to understand. I'm just staying with that.
Yeah, and, and we talked at our last meeting, when we thought it might be a good idea, we felt that we should have a good amount of information from our community and from everyone involved, so that they had something to chew on, rather than them, you know? So, so I agree with you, somewhere, somewhere in, for me, I think at the backside of bullet point number two, once, once we've, we've found out what's important to our community, and we've got these things, then bringing in some help to say, have you thought about the direction this could go? Or this could go? And really, you know, I, I agree with what you're saying.
Should we give some process on the front side? Would there be a possibility to say, here's what the process looks like? Not digging into it? Because I, I think, well, what I don't know is, is, you know, kind of what the vision is.
It's kind of like, and I think of this similar to the model that we're talking about for our building. This is a difficult thing for five members of a board to work through. We don't have that kind of time. Carrie and those guys have started this work, working with EdLeader 21. What is the plan? These are the guys that are providing this information. So this is not, you know, we're not going rogue, and I don't, nobody's suggesting that. But I mean, this is the plan here. I think that we have to have some trust that these guys will go out, there'll be a sub-组 of us that will start working on this, and will report back as soon as possible, as soon as we have more information, and will talk about, hey, is now a good time? Should we bring this in? What is it?
I think for me, the thing that made it all snap into place more than anything is, Portrait of a Graduate is, is, in my mind, similar to PLCs or AAW, or it will become the way that we do business in the classroom, on the field, everywhere that we are. It's not a thing that we're going to do and set on a shelf and say, look at us. They, as educators, are going to do it anyway. But it's such a huge initiative, and such a huge undertaking, that, that we, as a small group, felt that it was important that it, it have a placeholder on the board goals, because not only will it take their time and effort, but it'll also take funding, and, and really has the opportunity to create benchmarks for our students. I mean, John, like, like you drive home, time after time after time, we don't want to see the numbers. You know, I mean, sure, we care about the numbers, and our district's numbers are great, but this has the opportunity for us to create human beings that represent the things that are important to everyone in the district, those things that are more important than scoring 99% on the Iowa test of basic skills in math, you know? So, um, it, it is the way that they will do business. And, um, for a long time, I kept struggling with, is this just...
Is this the way they do it?
And it, it's, just picking seven words, it really diminishes the value of what this is. I think that once conference is over, and once there's more information, and I think, too, if you were to share the timeline, or maybe some of the websites that we've seen, and they could kind of take a peek at some of those, what it looks like to districts that have already gone down that road, it really helped me understand more about what Portrait of a Graduate can do for our district.
I, wait, I'm sorry, I don't know what to do. But when you said they, I'm really caught, and that makes me worried, because this is really only we, we will all do it, but they will bear a big burden.
But so often, we set the goals and they do the work.
Yeah.
You know? And, and pulling Portrait of a Graduate in, in, in the way it's working in my head, makes our, each student, all of our work, our parents, our support staff, our staff, our board. So...
We are, we are breaking our rule. I don't, I'm worried we're not going to get through some of these.
We've got an hour.
That's true.
Deep breath.
No, that's fine, but I want to make sure that you can see all of them in a little bit more detail, and then we can come back and say, ah, I see, that's here, this is there, whatever. And come back to some of these details, because they're important that we talk about them.
So one of the things that, that rings through my head, and I'm just trying to catch up just a little bit, but the, the communicating process, you know, and it'd be kind of your baby way, Brian, because what's ringing in my head is, is that meeting we had where people are like, I don't know what the process is, I don't know how, when we do this, and I don't know how we get involved. And so, what's kind of the front end of, you know, those folks that really want to get involved in this? And, and, you know, they're, they're the ones that are always talking in their ears. And so I want to make sure that, that we have a sense of what that's going to look like. So how are the, the parents and that sort of thing going to be able to get involved if this is something they feel passionate about?
Right. And I think that we, so, you weren't here, sorry, John, so I could just back up a smidge. Though it's really been the four of us working on this this summer, and I think that needs to broaden out first.
So we don't have that answer?
We don't have that yet, but we definitely know that is going to be vital, absolutely vital. We've reached out, Carrie said, to Siak and a few places, but we want to pull more in, and maybe even leverage something similar to what we've done with the building.
Good.
You know, with the, the project teams, to say, this might be an area, are you interested in participating in this group? Or something like that? To develop the pillars or the vision points, and to help define them.
Good.
When it comes to, there is a part, though, I think, here, and Carrie and you guys, if I'm wrong, there's a point here where it is a bit of a handoff, right? There's a lot of community involvement, saying, what, what is important? What is that, what do we need these graduates to, to look like or to have? And then there's a point where we say, we've defined it, now you guys do your work as educators and help work through the following bullet points, right? I mean, like, I wouldn't expect there to be the same level of involvement of parents all the way through the process, but especially up front, I think it's really important.
And I think the upfront part is going to be the most critical part, so they don't think that the deal's already set, it's already cooked. And so that's, really, mine isn't, that we get the strategy wrong. Mine's really more concerned of the impression that the deal's cooked, and my input really isn't. And so that's, that's my strategic issue that I want to throw out, is from a board member's perspective, is I want to make sure that it looks like I came before the building plan was set, you know, in the context of, of what Haley did. You know, it's the, the, okay, we, it'd be the equivalent of saying, well, here's the plans, you know, we hope you all like them, and then how do we modify? You know, that, that's the kind of, that's the strategy. And I know that's not what you're saying, but, but my...
You could say, and did that to someone's desk, like, yeah.
Well, which is, and so that's perfect, if that's how we felt about, here's the plans, because that's what we don't want to go to our parents with. And so, I, I love the, the stuff that's on the page, but I just want to make sure that strategically, we make sure on the front end, that we communicate process, and it's before we're too far down the road. Because if we get too far down the road, then they're going to feel like you guys did with the building plan. And that, that's my only, that's the big, the big picture, and, and so, whatever we need to do as far as communication, and getting the folks in upfront, saying, hey, we're going to be doing this, and here's what it's kind of going to look like, and we're going to be looking for your input, so if you're interested, here's where you plug in. And I think that's one of our huge strategies that, that starts with, and then I'm really good with digging in after that.
I'm writing a board with you about that, John.
I feel as if we did some of that work already, right? With the different buildings, and then in Siak, too, around like the, I'm using the word words, but around defining the Portrait of a Graduate.
Yeah, and defining that, defining what that looks like. And we, we, you're exactly right, Brian, and I think that through the conversations that we had late spring and now this summer, the, the feeling was, we need, we need to get more, we want to make sure that the community feels, feels heard. Because what we could have done is, we could have said, you know what? We did that in the spring, we've got our, we're narrowing our, our words down, and we could have just said, okay, we're ready to go. But we're like, no, we want to make sure that, that we have, have really reached out to as the community as the best that we possibly could do. So we thought, no, we need to, we need to come back to this, this early this fall, just on that. And so we've talked about, you know, we're going to reach out to the Ames Chamber through, through business community members. We want to do a little bit more when it comes, we've talked about having, you know, some, I hate to say like morning coffee group, but really inviting people in to say, you know, to just kind of tease through these words, and what does that mean to you? What do you think about? Because if, once you make that, once we solidify that definition of what is a collaborator, then we, then we're ready to go to that. But we want to make sure people, that people don't, why do you have, you know, what does this mean?
Who does that, yeah?
Yeah, that's the piece that we, we don't want to have happen.
So assuming that this is important to us, it's my basic premise, right? Then let's make sure that we're all comfortable on the front end with where we're going, which, that's, that's my whole point. And it's not a mistrust. We did it in the facilities, I'm saying I think we should do it here, is bring in the third party, help frame all that up, right? So who are, and maybe that comes in the details of the, of the one-year goals, but who are the other community and parent involvement? And what does that look like? Can help, somebody help us talk through that? So that's, I think that's really important.
And I'd be big on the part of, okay, collaborate is one of the words. So Carrie, you, we've got collaborated nailed down, we think we've communicated that, whoopin' heels. Where I would really want to be involved is, okay, what's... Where I would really want to be involved is, okay, what's the three- to five-year strategies that's going to make collaborate happen? That's where, that's where the rubber's really going to hit the road. Because I think we can come up with lots of portraits of graduate words, and it's not that they're not important, but how you go about the strategies, those. That's where I think getting the input part and letting you guys sort out what that input is. But to me, that's where, you know, your kind of rubber hits the road, is, is, okay, this is how we see a three, three- to five-year implementation plan for collaborating. It's going to look like this, this, this. And then, then you guys can sort out that. But getting that feed, feedback upfront is, is, I'm done, I think that's my...
Can I, I won't think, sorry, I promise we're going to move on from this part.
No, and actually, that's fine. If this is okay, I mean, we do have another hour. I don't need to, I leave by one more time.
The one thing, like using Tyler's a good example of the, I don't know, I'm going to give you credit. I don't know if it's yours or not, but around the building, like getting the building committees together, like it was, I think that pattern fits really well, is just writing it down, like people, getting people kind of engaged and excited about it. Making sure they're like involved for the commitment level of it. This is not just like a fly-by thing, like, hey, you're going to be in a series of meetings. And then like kind of give them a job or a task, or like let them know how they can make a difference, right? Like, that's the piece that I see continuing. Like, we have two types of input that we do really well. We have one that are like, hey, give me five minutes to fill out a survey. And then we have the other one, which I think is like the model that Tyler's led the group through really well around the building committee stuff, where it's like, hey, this is going to be buckling. This is a year or year and a half of commitment to see this through, meet in regular meetings. And here's what we're looking for you to do. Like, people feel engaged, they can feel like, I can make a difference, this is awesome. And anywhere in that middle ground, like, is, is, feels semi-dangerous, right? We're just like, we value everyone's opinion. Just stop in without any context, give us your thoughts, and we're going to listen. And then they're going to feel really offended when we're not really listening to them anymore, you know? Because like, they're saying crazy stuff, because they don't have the context. Or we're not leading them through the conversation, or they don't know what we're asking or looking for. Like, so how do we kind of like cultivate the community and patrons such that they're like, yeah, this is what we're doing, I can't wait to help out, I know all the context, I'm in on the commitment? Like, and that's the piece. I think the communication committee, especially early on, did a good job with that. The building stuff has done a good job with that. But then we also hear this whole thing of like, I come to every board meeting and you aren't listening to me. And it's like, well, we're not really looking for that feedback in a way that's going to... Like, that's not helpful to shape this other thing. So how do we help them, because they want to be engaged, help them like shape with us? Sorry, that was a long, long talk right there.
No, I think, I mean, I think I got the gist of what you were saying. And I do think that this is something where, this isn't a fly-by, and I just dropped your suggestions in that box. I do think you need some context. And that's kind of why I like that, that model that we've used in the past, where we're getting people involved, we're kind of bringing them along. This is, this is what we need from you. Feel free to reach out on your own, you know, to, to get outside opinions and bring them to us. And let's work as a group throughout this, this process. So I do think it has to be kind of a committed group, or committed groups of this, that, that move through the work. But is that, did I capture that right, Brian, what you were saying? Okay, just making sure. Sorry, Tyler.
No, no problem. So again, if we say, which I think we are, this is really important, this is really big, and it's not diminishing it now to just a few words, but it's five to seven words. And it's, it's very transparent visual for our district. Don't you think our parents are going to be going, where did those words come from?
Yeah.
And so we want to be able to tell that story very transparently.
Sure.
And I think I'm hearing everybody saying, well, it's beyond this room.
Yeah, definitely.
Right? And so that, that's my point.
Yeah.
And for me personally, it always helps to frame it up on the front end, that I can communicate it better as we go.
Yeah. 100% agreement on that. I mean, I think, I think what we've done to date, or, and I say "we" as if I've done some of it, I haven't. They said they've done some collection. I think that's kind of pre-work. I think it gives us like an idea of where the spaces we're in. But by no means do I think we even know exactly what those words would be, you know? And so I, I do want to make sure that people understand, yeah, there's been some pre-work, but we're still kind of the very early stages of this. And their, their input is needed and, and still useful, right? It's, I hate to be asked, in my opinion, when it's too late on something. I think that's all critical, so. And I think I put in my email, we didn't put up here, that communication is absolutely key in this one. Early, and how do we get it out so that the people, you know, you, sure, we, we definitely want to include the people who typically have some ideas, you know, that they want to share. But also maybe some folks that haven't been engaged yet. Maybe it's a good chance to pull people in. Maybe people with unique perspectives because of their career, or, you know, I don't know. Any number of reasons that might give this a more rounded perspective.
Does the, do you guys feel like you got enough resources to get this done? So, thinking Vic, so Vic drowned. And so now we're saying, hey, we got a, you know, one to two-year, you know, strategic planning or long-term planning thing we're going to throw on. In addition to that, I know you're all equally busy, but I just throw that out as I know we've had that discussion at the base school level. Do you feel like we got enough resources for you guys to be able to accommodate this? Or do we need to, to have the Halens and the story counties of the world to help keep this process moving? The only reason I'm saying that is, is it's, it's been hard to, to make progress in this area. So I just want to throw that out early, too. What do you guys think about that?
I personally think that we have already been seeking that out. I mean, we really were the, I mean, we were one of the first districts that came together with Van Meter, Johnston, West Des Moines, Winterset, Southeast Polk. Nevada has now joined us. So I mean, we really were kind of the spearhead of, we got, we started the conversation of, okay, hey, we know you guys are members of this. We're wondering, you know, we'd love to partner with you. So I think we've got, we've got like-minded people with us. Some of these people, some of the districts have already done some of this work. Some of the districts are not as far along as we are. So I think we've got that support system in place. I, I keep, I hate continually growing up, like at Leader 21 is like, ooh. But we are use, I mean, that's why we joined that organization. Because we knew that this was about districts that are doing great things, but how do you move to that next level? And that's, that's what their support, that's what they're there for. Whether they physically come here, or we're just, or consulting online, or however we're doing that. I feel that when we go in September, we're going to have a lot of networking opportunities to see, we're going to have a lot of networking opportunities that way also, that are going to help us as we move forward. I'm not saying that, and, oh, another thing I should say, Heartland has just put in a position of somebody, a quarter-time position of somebody that is going to be offering support in just this area. So we've got some, we've got that support also. So I think that there's those things already, there's already happening that, that I personally feel okay about, but I'm not going to, I can't speak for everybody at this table.
Well, that's what I want to, you know, from the board thing, one of the things that I really want to communicate is, is, is if it's a matter of resources, let us know. And because this is the most important thing being right here. And I think of the time that we spent on facilities, when we, we start thinking about, this is much more important than that, when we spent 1.9 million on consulting to make the buildings happen. And so, let's not make this a matter of resources. So I just want to make sure we just put that out in front so that you guys don't feel like, gosh, if I only had more time, this would be better, you know? We can bring more resources to you. And if the peers are doing it for the resources, that's even better. Because I think that's where you're going to get the best information. Or it's the people that are in the same huddles that you guys are in. So just let us, let us know as a board, if, if that becomes an issue. Because we want to support you in this endeavor. And we know this takes a lot of time, and it takes a lot of brain power and a lot of energy, and so.
Yeah, thanks for saying that. I mean, I, in my conversations that I've had with these folks, it's, that has never been, I think, the reason for not pulling in a third party. You know, let's try to save money, that's, it's too expensive. I think it was more like, this is our district, and the sense of ownership, right? And we know it, and we want to, and we kind of want to develop it on our own, it's kind of the feeling I got. So I'm glad you pointed that out, because I would hate for that to be the perception that we're not going that route initially, to save money, or, you know?
Well, and, you know, being part of the consortium is, also comes with resources. And they have roadmaps laid out. I mean, they're experts, they've done this with many large districts. You know, they're relatively new to Iowa, but they've been doing this for quite a long time. I mean, the guy is a national speaker that travels all over the country, you know, promoting college and career readiness. And the roadmap is laid out. You know, we're not recreating the will, we're following a very well-scripted-out plan. And I think Carrie has, you know, started the early stages of exactly what the plan calls for, calling it step by step. And then, you know, we've, you know, gone on a visit to Van Meter, seen it in action in a variety of different steps, and exactly talked to the people, where did you stumble? Where did you have some issues? You know, what would you have done differently? And to collaborate with those people has been helpful. Had a day where we had a conference call where we helped to flush some things out. I think going to the conference, the team that's going to the conference will help to really flush that out even more. Because I'm sure they'll have specific, you know, sessions on different areas of people that are in different, you know, processes, and different parts of the process. I think it's definitely headed in a really positive direction. I like, you know, I think it was, can't remember if he used the words, this is how we do business. You know, from, from the little ones all the way up to the big ones. And when students walk out of here, we have a very clear vision of what we want from our students, and we're very purposeful about how we get them.
So that.
Can we take a look at two so we don't...
Yeah. Is that right? I mean, we can always come back when there's, if there's time. Now, this one I really don't feel very good talking about, because I feel like this is...
This, I think, we had, when the four of us met, a good conversation, John, about engagement. And how are we defining engagement? And through that conversation, it was like, you know what? This, when we're talking about engagement from IPI, we really are talking about, talking about students being cognitively engaged. And we've got that emotional engagement piece in a different pool. Because when we're looking here, what we're looking at is that higher-order thinking piece. Not, because kids can be higher-order thinking, and they can come out of it and say, well, did, you know, how was today, Warren? You know, or, you know, they're not, they might, it might not be, I mean, we can engage kids, but that doesn't mean that, that every kid's going to come out and say, oh my gosh! You know, like you want them to, to do. Maybe they will, maybe they won't. It depends on who they are and what that, what that specific activity or lesson was about. So, when we look at the cognitively engaged piece, what we've done is we've just broken that down in, and we've already started this. We're looking at, our goal is to build that capacity. And we're, once we, you know, we've got, we've broken that into two bullet points of training additional staff each year. We've got the funds to do that right now, so we want to make sure that we're doing that. But then our goal is to continually do that. And then those teachers that are trained, they will be leading that discussion. But the more people that are part of that process and that go through that training, they're going to have a more vested interest in it. So it is important to build that capacity on what, what exactly the science is behind, and the research behind IPI itself. So that's what, that's what the building capacity is about. Then we also have a piece in there about what, after you've done the data collection, what are you doing with that data? And that teachers are having those teacher-driven conversations. And this year, we've already got it set on the calendar. We've got the, we've got the data collection days on the calendar. We've got the conversation days on the calendar. Because we want to make sure that, that we're sending the message that this is the way we do business. We want staff to know that, this is what it is. We also, after a while, kids are going to, especially at the high school, the middle school level, the kids are going to know after a while, what, oh, this is one of those days. They're coming in, you know, looking for, you know, looking at what we're doing. So, and then we want to have the professional development opportunities that are really focused around cognitively, that cognitive engagement piece. And we, we just use the AIW and the PBL piece on that. For example, what we're going to be doing this year for, one of the pieces for professional development, when you're looking at project-based learning. We've got some, you know, we've got, just like a classroom has, you know, wide range of where students are. The same thing with teachers. I mean, we have people that are brand-new to the, to the profession, to your, most of them are, you know, someone that's been here and, you know, been teaching for 40-plus years. So you got to think that that's a, that's a wide range of needs there. And just because somebody is, that's been here that long, doesn't mean that they can't do some learning. You know, that, we all should be lifelong learners, let me just put it that way. Anyway, from there, we're, we have chosen, when we look at project-based learning, there's eight essential elements. As an administrative team, we looked at that and we said, okay, that, what is your driving question? What are that? That's the area that we're going to focus on, and we're going to use our instructional coaches. And we're going to have, during our PD, we'll have, I'd almost say like a mini-leçon-type model for what do, where are the, where are the diverse needs of our teachers? So let's say we've got a group of newbies that are like, I don't, I'm, I'm just really struggling with, how do I, what is a driving question? So we'll have, we'll have one of our instructional coaches that will take a group of teachers that will work on what is a driving question. Down to those teachers that are, that are experts at it, and then they're able to collaborate together. So we want to differentiate that professional learning for our teachers during that. But we want, we are going to, our focus is going to be on that driving question piece. Do you have something to add, John?
And that's kind of the key, Carrie, then, to get that kind of engagement, is that driving question that somehow I'll plug into that driving question?
Yes.
And so that students, we can get students going because it's in their wheel also.
Well, and the whole, not the whole, the thought process in this is, okay, so we've got a project, we've got a good unit at every grid level, which is great. But if they, if the, if that unit is doing exactly what we want it to do, that's not the only time we want kids to be working with a driving question. We want that, how can we get that infused in all of our units? So really taking a look at, okay, how, digging deep and so that driving questions are throughout the full year. Not just in, oh, we're going to do that during PBL, but now we're going to go back to our old way of teaching. We want, we really want to up that so that, that best practice is happening all the time, not just when we're doing project-based learning.
And so our...
Our project-based learning unit, I should say.
Yeah, so last year, Carrie, we were kind of just putting out some units out there to get this rolling, is that...
Well, I think we wanted people to feel comfortable, feel comfortable with what this is and how it looks different, it feels different.
A lot different.
But the, the thing is, there's elements of project-based learning in those that can be infused in your everyday lessons. And that's, that's what you want to do, you want to take, okay. So now we've been working with this project-based learning. Everybody's got a unit. And we've got all of our K, pre-K to seniors, they're all working. All kids have an opportunity to do some kind of deep PBL unit each year that they're in school. Some, some have more at the middle school, depending on what teachers, you know what I'm saying? I mean, they could have multiple times. But the next step is taking those, that best-practice way of looking at it. And how are you doing that in your everyday teaching, not just in the project-based learning unit?
I'd say the bulk of our teachers are excited about that.
Oh, I think, yes.
What's that?
I'd say the bulk of our teachers are excited about not like, quit creating, not quit, but these giant units, but just let's do pieces of it in everything that we do, because we know it's best practice.
So the authentic work, I mean, I like that it's tied together, you've gotten that last bullet point, the authentic work and the project learning. For a long-term goal, which is what these are, right? How standard or long-term are the specific measurements? Because it gets very specific in the, in the goal, as measured by category five and six on IPI. And is that pretty standard? It's always there, it's always been there? Or how, how do you use, will, will that become antiquated before we've got it initiated?
I don't know. But is this where you're talking about, what is the definition of a level five and a level six?
Yeah, it says category five and six on IPI.
I've, I've guys been around for...
That'll stay contested.
Since the late twenties, I think, is...
That will stay contested. That will stay constant, yes.
Yeah.
And it really is looking at, IPI looks at like higher order thinking, and so that's not something that'll change. Like, you know, project-based learning has that in it, but it's kind of a different twist. IPI is just measuring higher, higher order thinking, which no matter what your, you know, what the specific task might be, is looking at the thinking behind the task. And so that should be pretty standard, I would think.
So tying all that together, like in that last bullet point, should work pretty well, then?
I do, I feel like there's a little bit of work to be done on this, only to frame it as in like some more goal wording. Because right now, it is, it's kind of like, you know, this is, there's work to be done. You have to kinda get in this process and it'll be an ongoing thing, right? Like this continuous improvement. And to me, it's, it's very important work. And I think that part of the goal is to, to do the work, right? But then, maybe what's missing is some measurement of are we progressing, you know? And I know that's tricky ground because I know you don't want a lot of external pressure. You know, you want the teachers to come up with.
The tricky thing about this goal is, you know, what standardized tests measure is easy to measure, but it's not what we want, right? It's lower level thinking.
Right.
The reason we don't measure higher levels of thinking is it's hard to quantify. And so we're trying to come up with a way to quantify something that is tough to quantify and it's the right thing to do, but how do you, how do you measure?
It's, it's a lot tougher to put a SMART goal on this kind of stuff because it's going to be very, it's gonna be very subjective, but you'll know it when you see it, when it comes with those graduates.
Which is why the state doesn't measure it, which is why the feds don't measure it. It's hard to do.
Right.
You know?
But it's just, it's a little different kind of a goal, like, you know, where the others might say, well, we're not, we know we're done when we get here. This is kind of, it just keeps going and going.
One, one reason that, that I think it's an important goal is the fact that it is gonna take funding to give, for us to build the capacity for our, to getting our, all of our teachers involved in it. And to me, that's one of the reasons that it, as a, as a goal, that's just setting the tone that says, you know what, the board is behind us on this and it's important to help us in doing business the way we wanna do business.
Yep.
And we would be able to pick off from some of the peers of, hey, this is, this is pretty subjective, but here's how we've, we've at least got feedback to the board or to parents to, you know, that's, that's out there. And even though it's gonna be kind of subjective.
We did two rounds last year and we had a session.
Oh.
It was so rich. I mean, intermediate level, I'm sure all of our levels, but, I mean, teachers and I just sat and the IPI grade level leaders that were trained led it and it was awesome. It was really rich, good stuff.
Yeah, how so? I love, I love that feedback. Tell me.
So as they go through and do the rounds, they just stop in and get a snapshot of what's going on and then score it based on how they were trained, at what level the kids were required to think. And so, we had our billing data from 8:15 till 3 o'clock. They stopped in and did maybe 90...
Well, we had, I think we had over...
Over 100.
We might have had over 100.
And when we say they...
The people that were, the data collectors.
Are these the, are trained folks?
Yes, our trained.
So I have three teachers and my instructional coach that are trained just in this, but I think each of them, they're decent learning, that's what we have.
Okay.
And then, from there, we've, they put the data, Carrie put the data together and then they led discussions. And IPI has a protocol of, you know, first, you go through what you've noticed that you like.
What are some strengths, what are some areas of weakness, what are, you know?
Yeah. So they facilitate through those questions and, I mean, right off the bat, like, we've too much of level two, which again, through IPI, a little bit of every level is good because there has to be some direct construction where the kids are so heated in, but then there has to be the application process too.
Yeah, so the hard part will be...
Is that balance.
Having our teacher saying, hey, it isn't all just two, we're looking at this objective even though they don't have a way to know, you know?
And that's where the building capacity comes into play. The other, the other piece, the other financial piece, not that I want, you know, but you gotta, we hire subs for that. Because we are, I mean, obviously, if teachers are doing data collection, we have to have some money in the classroom. So the more people that we have trained, we can pull out somebody for just an hour. We can, we have a floating sub in each building that will, will actually, in the high school and the middle school, we actually have two subs because we have, because of the size of the building, we have two teams running throughout the day so that we can make sure we have enough data points.
One of the neatest parts was, I mean, IPI is not tied to any individual teacher or classroom, but man, they all wanted to know, like, what, what did I score so I can know?
Engagement, right?
Right. Which then was too, this is a great opportunity to work with your instructional coach through the coaching cycle to have that specific focus on your engagement. So it might kinda help some of the things.
Yeah, and we have another, another piece that we're gonna pull in this year and the fact that you could, they could do their own grading of themselves. They could take a day and, and every 15 minutes, they're gonna just take a quick snapshot, okay, where my kids are right now, where my kids are at, and are they seeing any areas of themselves that they wanna do some self-reflection and bring in their coach to help them out too.
And we're doing this outside of performance evaluation so that they can feel good about, hey, this is just about getting better, not...
There is absolute, there is, that's a good point. There is no evaluation tied to this at all.
Good.
Because if there was, then that would be, and that is why we have taken ourselves out of that piece of, of the data collection so that there isn't a feeling of evaluation to it.
Yeah, it's just that continuous improvement.
Yes, exactly.
It's kind of cool to hear you say too about how well those first sessions went because I remember being in that class and it felt like towards the end, there was a good amount of time where the instructor was kinda trying to coach people through like, okay, it's not, we're probably not gonna go well in the beginning and, you know, people might be reluctant to really buy in. It sounds like that wasn't the case at all. So that's good, so that way you don't have to play, whatever, you can kind of do that. I mean, we knew that, I'm not surprised, but it's cool, it's good to hear that.
That's a good point, Deb. You know, you had the opportunity to sit in and go through, you didn't go out to the classrooms, I don't think you did.
An unauthorized data collector.
You know, car carrying.
Yeah.
The thing about it, that's nice about that is if, you know, that when we talk about this being available to our teachers, if there's a board member that wants to sit in and kind of listen to that, it gives you a better understanding of what's, what's involved in that IPI. And I know that, I think when you went with AIW, you had board members that went out, isn't that correct, Kim? To do some of the different things as far as, maybe that was more of the trainings that was at a conference. But you could do that maybe if Carrie let you in and listened to some of the information. That'd be great.
Oh, a good conversation.
I never said this before, but if you have the time, I'd recommend it because it was very informative. I mean, Carrie, it, it helped clear some stuff up if you didn't know what higher order learning was, to be honest.
In October, we've got teachers from every building that are gonna go to, through this next round, so we're excited about that.
Is it here again?
Yeah, we, we right away volunteer to be a host site just because then it saves our teachers from having to travel somewhere, so.
And then the peer schools then come at that time?
Yeah, like we have, they, they cap it at 25. He doesn't want class sizes bigger than 25. So we've got over half the, we, I think we have 12 people signed up for this.
Wonderful.
And it, I should also say, on the financial end of it, it is, it probably costs us, well, the training itself is 175 approximate dollars per teacher to go through the training. But then we have to, you know, we hire subs for all that, so there's a little bit of, I mean, there's the cost in the training also, so.
Cool, next one, I think, okay. The next one was our added goal that we kinda came to, as Carrie mentioned before, when we were doing that, this goal number two, we were kinda talking a lot about the cognitive engagement and, and we kinda started to look out and look for definitions of things. We realized, well, there's another half of this that, you know, we're kind of not addressing. And that is more the, the culture. I think we had committed to fostering an environment that is welcoming, inclusive, and kind, so the culture and climate, Gilbert Districts, the district. Are we a partnering district or, you know, how do our parents and the folks maybe not, well, we didn't just say, it's also inside, students, teachers, parents, community members. What is their take on, on the culture and climate here at Gilbert? And this is where we thought would be very important to utilize a vendor to help us like perform some surveys. Number one, because we don't really have that expertise in developing good survey questions. We thought like we could, there's, there's companies that do this and do it very well. From that aspect, I think it's important. I think it's also very important that the people who participate in these surveys understand that it's anonymous to us. We want their feedback, we don't, we're not trying to...
Out somebody.
Out somebody or to tie and say, you know, you said this or that and to have anybody have any ideas, you know, that they're, we want anything other than their honest feedback. So this was kind of a big one. And we, I think we also thought, kind of jumping here, hold on. I don't think I put it in this one. Oh yeah, school volunteers on. So other, looking at beyond this, how do people feel about volunteering for this school? So have their experiences been good? Do they feel welcome as volunteers? Lots of different angles, I guess, to go with this. But the idea here being, we don't know until we collect data. I think we all have a feeling of how we kind of perceive our district, but I don't think we have good data that, that we can really start from. And I think this, like, we talked about this being that baseline where we can identify gaps that we need to then build goals off of. So initially, this is kind of setting that baseline. It didn't really make a lot of sense to set goals, specific goals to improve until we knew where we were.
It'd be kind of interesting to see what the peer schools are doing, you know, to measure climate and culture and student engagement and staff engagement. So that might be a good question for them when we get kicking this one, is, you know, what are they, what are they doing to kind of get the temperature of the water?
Yeah. Yep. So, I don't know, was there more to add to that one? I think that was...
I think the online pieces there, then that really goes into your mission, redefining your mission.
Oh, yeah. Along with the portrait of the graduate, a lot of these kind of...
What do you mean by that?
Well, we can think, I think that through the portrait of a graduate and bringing, asking community members, you know, thoughts and, but we're also gonna get another, we're gonna get another thing, piece of data here if we do this, on how people are feeling. Are we, for example, I'll just say, are we as welcoming as we think we are? Are we as inclusive as we hope to be?
Yeah.
I think that, to me, that's, that, that's gonna help us, that will help, might push us a little bit further one way or another, I don't know.
It's kind of the front end of the, you know, the higher level learning. When I'm emotionally in a good place, I'm much more set up to be cognitively in a good place. And so this is really kind of the front end of, of the IPI really in a way.
We put that, I, there's a bullet point there too, like impact of emotional achievement on learning and mental health, just to that, that point, John.
Yeah.
I think there's so much that schools deal with now.
Yeah.
Can we help with that? Can we help with that? Someone may be some stress that students are feeling or anxiety. How can we kind of look at where they're at with that to get them to the best place possible to learn, you know, within the, within our, the boundaries?
This'll probably, you know, really kind of hit on that guidance, you know? Do we, do we have enough resources with, with the guidance that, that, hey, we need to spend more time putting these students in a better emotional place so that, that teachers and principals are spending less time in that perhaps?
Yeah. And for me, I was here at the, I had just joined the board when we started our mission work, the mission that we currently have. And it was really a very top-down process. I mean, like, a very small group of people wrote our mission and they bring it to the board and we wordsmith it and then they take it to just one community. And I wanna say that it was DAC. And that would be wordsmithed again. And it was a year and a half long process, but we didn't ever move outside of the 30 people that were either on the board or on the administrative team or on DAC. And I love the way, not just goal three, but also the work through goal number one, that we have the potential to really make it district mission more so than just a few words that mean something to someone.
So on, on three, just so I'm clear, I mean, we're, it's a larger umbrella than just the students. I mean, obviously, students are the focus, but this is the culture climate for the staff. This is culture climate for the parents as they look at the school, right? Do they feel like they can come in and volunteer?
Yep.
I think that's... Beyond, we were, we even talked about all the taxpaying patrons of the district because we ask a lot of them every time we...
Yeah.
And not to mention, not to say though that that would be one survey that would do all of that, but a series of them to get the...
Broad scope, I mean, the one before, which we don't need to adopt student engagement. This is culture climate as it relates to the district.
Yeah.
The thing that's nice about three is, we may have our feelings of how we are out in the community and what we're doing, but this will give us information that maybe, maybe we need to improve on this area or that area. And it'll be a true perspective of where things are at there.
Yeah.
It's kind of the equivalent of what we're asking the teachers to do, right? It's, it's, hey, can I do it better? And so I see this as the same kind of continuous improvement by going out and asking. That's really the key to saying, we're really working on this, right? And no matter, it's just saying, hey, we're, we're gonna work on this and not that we're not now, but it's when you're going out and asking, people, people believe it.
We could, I mean, the results from this could really be pretty cool, but also take a lot of new resources, right? Are we as a board, I mean, I, I just wanna make sure that like, if we commit to this as a board to have this as a goal, like, we're ready to resource these things, especially...
I know the Gallup's free for the students.
So that, so no, no, I think, I think it's, I think it's big expense to get the data.
Oh, okay. Oh, yeah.
But I'm thinking more like, whatever the data result is, we're like, we're like, geez, we need to improve in this area.
So I, I love that it's proposed to be third-party vendor, don't recreate the wheel, right? So as whoever's looking at what are our options there, I think that's an important piece, is it's not just the survey. Does that third party come with interpretation and analysis?
Oh, please.
Assistance with, well, if you scored this way.
Yeah, this is what it could mean, this is how you interpret. And that's what I, I think that was my hope too, is that that third party would play back both of those roles, interpretation of results. But I think then, what it is, is like, I think Carrie said this in a meeting and it was, it was exactly right on. These, we don't know what these results will be, but we need to be prepared for whatever they are and to take them seriously. And then we have to say, based on these, here's where we think we need to focus and make decisions because, you know, we can't do everything and we can't, we have to make a continued effort, but we'll understand our gas.
And I like the idea of just, you know, we're gonna make some mistakes as we do this, but are we headed the right direction? And so it's this idea of, let's not be afraid to make a mistake, let's just be, we're headed the right direction. And so if we get some feedback here that says, God, maybe we need to take a left turn instead of a right, that's okay, but we're, we're making our way to where we wanna go. So I, I think as a board, I wanna communicate, the idea is, is, you know, trying to work at perfection, heck no. Let's, 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 you know, keep working in the right direction and make some decisions and keep the process moving. I think where people get stuck is, is I had a guy talking about farming and he's like, soon as you stop moving ahead, you're stuck. And so he was this equivalent of a tractor. If you've ever been in one and then you start to say, okay, I'm no longer moving forward, what we wanna do is have momentum. And from what I'm hearing, you guys are having some great momentum. And so that idea of, let's keep the momentum going and we as a board need to support you in that momentum.
Yeah. One thing that I wanted to call out too, because about your resources, the question there, like, we listed in here some, I, we just kinda put some names to this, but then a lot of times it's board members, superintendent, administrators. But I think that throughout this process, we're maybe going to identify people within our district who might be better resources to align, like, for example, the, our guidance staff isn't in this. I don't know, I'm just, I'm asking a question. It might be situations where we can spread a little of the work out. I don't know how that, that stuff, does the administrators still find that out? But I mean, I, I don't wanna propose that, but maybe not everybody, maybe these guys don't have to do all of it, you know?
Why? Yeah, I mean, like, I feel like you're...
Why? Yeah, I mean, like, I feel like every board meeting, we're like, oh, and by the way, your job responsibility is, and we like add like all these extra things, like every single board meeting, I want to be careful about that. But I think almost, I can do that point, I guess, like in addition to that, it's like, these people are, hi, these people. Hello, all these nice people are here. It's not, you know, I mean, they don't have to be experts in every single thing, right? So like, how do we find those people? And then I think to the other point, like, maybe this is true for a lot of surveys. I'm not, I'm not very good in the survey department, but like certainly for this, the outliers are the really important ones. And so how do we make sure that the outliers that we find that are not feeling included in mind, even though they may be a statistical minority, are still really important in this area? And that's the one, like, again, that, almost for that reason alone, like, we really got to find the third-party vendor who's going to help us survey. And then to Tyler's point, you know, review the survey findings with this. So that we're not like, oh, like 78% are doing great. We're like, great, cool, good. But it's like, well, what else? Exactly. Thanks for the math. I was stuck there for a second. Like, what are the, you know, or even just like, there's like three people that raise a really critical point. Only those three people would ever have a view into this.
I think that's really, I mean, the third-party is critical, I think, for that, those purposes, just making sure we have the expertise and we can understand the rest of it. I think it's just, it's also critical for the credibility of the effort, right? I mean, we're asking for real, just honest feedback. We, we're ready. Let's hear it. And so I think people will feel that in a third-party situation, more so maybe than in another situation, so.
I mean, we want the feedback and we're motivated to take action, right? That's the same thing. Like, we're not just hearing nothing. Like, we're getting something and now we're going to take some action.
And along the same lines, we're asking everybody else to be data-driven. So we can go.
We have 15 minutes.
Okay, well, this next one is, we're just good with it. The next one is about the committed to planning responsibility and responsibility for our future. So this was fiscal responsibility and then creative design and planning. This was something that we brought up before. Was it just the last time that we talked about this? I can't remember.
It was at a board meeting, briefly, and we touched on it.
So two aspects of this, obviously making sure that we are fiscally responsible with the money that we have. And making sure that we're utilizing the best way that the money goes where our priorities go, things like that, right? That's kind of our solvency rate and those tools that I think Gail brings to help us with that. That's kind of a standard piece.
The only thing, I wonder if that's a strategic issue though. I mean, we're doing those things.
Yeah.
And so that's my only question is, is if I looked at that and I said, well, where do we need to be in three to five years? I get the solvency ratio, but that's kind of a result. So I feel really good about, I mean, if you had to say, do we have a lot of, I mean, obviously, we want to, we want to get to that solvency ratio, but I'm seeing the data that gets us there and feel like we have the forecast in place. So, so I'm, in my own mind, I'm not for sure if that's a if it's a, a goal in that, you know, it's kind of a resultation.
Yeah, what about the second? So the second.
Just the fiscal responsibility. I think we're doing it. So my question is, is do we have a goal of keep doing what we're doing? That's, that's the nature of it. So love it. Very important, but I'm saying if I had to sit down and say, okay, what strategies do I put in place because of that? I think they're in place. And so, so that's the only point I make on that. Not that it's not important. I just think we, we're probably doing what we need to be doing there.
I think part of the thought process though was that, you know, we just passed this bond and we're really checking off a lot of, of what, you know, when, even when you came on the board, that we would have never guessed that we could have gotten to this point, you know? And we didn't ever have an ongoing analysis. There was a huge undertaking early when Tyler was elected and Joe Metzger and Mike Coverding really invested a lot of time to, to put us in a place where we were thinking proactively. And so part of the conversation that the four of us had was how do we, how do we keep that going? Sure, we've checked off a lot of boxes. Maybe we won't. You know, we've, we've got an elementary somewhere in the future. We've got all of these other things. So we
So just a general thing, not an operational thing?
Right.
So I, I would agree. I don't know that it's for tonight, whether it's those specific things, but I fully agree that one of the long-term should be. We're keeping the long-term in mind, right? And to me, it would be a fiscal and facility, right? And they're obviously linked, but I like that creative design and planning so that the staff continues to know, hey, we want feedback. And as you're seeing things from different peers, what do we do next time we've got a bond? But it's also, you know, laying out the plan. Because as soon as we're done with this one, people are going to be asking, well, what's the next, right? So I think in general, having some.
Yeah, and I want to clarify, I was only talking about bullet point one, not bullet point two, because there's tons of strategy in bullet point two.
I think it's good, just if nothing else, there's a bookend there, whether you put solvency or whatever, right? So I realize it kind of switches from strategy to an outcome, but same time.
Well, if we're aware of that.
If you could just sign in.
That's, that's one of the things we keep in mind when we're making decisions. Ultimately, that's, that's it for all four of these, right? Please help us drive decisions.
And even your, you probably shouldn't add in there, the, what we want to do on the, on a long-term planning needs to be a bullet point two, right? Where we see ourselves five and 10 years implementing, you know, portrait of a graduate, for an example, of, you know, what's that going to look like five years from now? Because we need to have that in there too.
In this document or on this call?
Fiscal responsibility, so that we make sure we have the resources to carry out, you know, what we're talking about. So, so here's our three to five-year plan. Okay, what resources, you know, are we going to have to come up with? And what kind of priorities does that change with regard to fiscal responsibility? Okay, no, I'm, I'm good.
So I, I guess, just looking for, those are the, those are the, that's what we have in place so far. Like I said, this has to be handed out. I think some people really need a chance to kind of dive in and maybe start to weedle out some, some details. Does it look directionally correct? Does this look like something that, number one, are all four, something that we would like to consider board goals? Is there one you'd maybe take out? I guess I'm just looking for that kind of feedback so we can, you know, go forward in the right direction with these.
So to answer that question, I have another question for it, which is, do we expect these, you're describing, I mean, these aren't annual, obviously, there's very, so these are long-term. We expect it's three, four, five years that they would be on a reevaluate, right? I mean, so that's one thing to frame it up because, and then if that's the case, well, is it the intention that then each year we'd have annual goals that then are underneath each one of these?
Yes, yes. Am I speaking out of turn? I mean, that's what I believe. Like, this is the high-level framework. And so then what is this? What are the, the goals, specific goals for this school year that are going to help us move in the direction for each of those four?
More like number one is set up now. You know, Kerry's got the framework, so she was able to put in some things that will you know, be specifically this year, but it would be, I guess through our conversations, we assumed that we would do the same for each one.
So, but the only thing that has bad optics is, is we set the three to five-year plan and we didn't get the upfront feedback and buy-in. And so I wonder if we need a goal to do that. Yeah, yeah. So maybe goal number one is, is, hey, this is, this is kind of what we're throwing out on the table to get the discussion started. And then we set up the how we want to communicate that plan and get people buying in and engaged to it. That's, that's my only.
When we did it last time, how did we do that? When you kind, when the goals that we had before, like that I saw? Who, who did, who had developed those before?
I'm not sure, but, but what I want to make sure we don't do is, is that they feel like, here's your blueprints. Here's the way we're going. So it goes back to that. Is, is, I love it, but, but how are you going to do for that person that feels like they just got handed the blueprints? And I had a lot of good ideas that I feel that this, this cake is already baked.
I want, I think, are you talking about these guys as being the folks that might be the ones who?
No, I'm just saying, pick, pick, you know, Joe, community member that's interested and they say, you know, okay, you guys have set the three to five-year plan at your August board meeting. I didn't even know there was a plan coming out. I would have loved to have been able to be part of that process.
Well, but are these, am I misunderstanding in that these are, are, these are board goals, right? And, and through, because what we've always done in the past, like those, those back there on the poster, I'm sorry, Stacy, behind you, but you. Those are board goals, but yet within them, we, our, our hope is to bring the whole community in to help us accomplish the goals of the board. And so I think, I mean, just, just my whole thought, and I understand where you're going, John, but I mean, it's just, I think, I think it has to be, there have to be these big high-level, I don't know. There, there has to be something very high-level that, that we, we're saying we as a board support now, we want to pull you in to help us define it and, and make it real.
The only reason I bring it up is, is I was at a board meeting and there was three parents that were right there. And they said, I want to know what the process is for setting three to five-year long-term goals because I want to be a part of it. And so we came up with that policy that we drafted and we said, okay, this is how we're going to do it. So that those folks would know that they could be a part of. And so all I'm saying is, is if, if we go ahead, and I'm, I'm only one vote, but I'm just going to have a hard time looking those people in the eye and saying that we had a policy that we didn't go to and, you know, we want your input, but it's already said at August board meeting. Now, if we just say as a board that we'll do a better job next time, you know, then that's one thing, but I'm, I would have a hard time looking at those people in the eye and saying that we went by our board policy and process and we went and gathered the input to set our three to five-year goals. We didn't.
We've kind of put the cart before the horse in this, in the fact that we're talking about that policy in the next meeting. So.
But that's why we had to in order, you know, for us to say that. And, and everybody's got a vote, but I'm just saying, we didn't, we didn't deliver on what we said we would do. And so, you know, we have to make those decisions and we got to move forward, but I just wanted to make sure that I was the voice for those folks because I said that we would include them and we're not.
I, and I think that, I wasn't here, I don't know who those folks are, but I think that we have four very high-level initiatives, very high-level. What we want our graduates to look like, that we want to make in cognitive engagement.
I'm, I'm good with, I'm good with the information. It's the process.
So if there's something, another big fifth thing that we haven't thought about, yeah, right? That's something that I think we always, I don't, I don't know that the only things we can ever work on are board goals, but.
So the only, the only thing, we're all in agreement with what we went over.
Yeah.
So what we missed was, should we now have an open to the community work session where we say, this is what makes sense to us? This is a chance to give your feedback before we go.
Oh, yeah, sure, sure.
Oh, absolutely. I agree 100%.
And it would be the equivalent of, remember when we had the meetings on the facilities plan? What do we call those things? Where everybody would come in? The forums.
But we still had a plan for what we needed. We just received input and, and, and made sure that the community was on board. But I don't know that we're necessarily.
But no one went into those forums with the idea of, we know what we're going to do.
Oh, I don't think we have yet.
We said, hey, we could build an elementary school or we could do these jobs. What do you think? We recommend doing this. And so I get, I think we could get there, but I just think it needs to be one of the goals.
The next, the next step to do that.
Make sure we get full agreement and our full exposure.
Yeah, thank you.
Community, right?
Because I love, so I mean, I, I think we got a good plan. I just think we, we need to make sure we have buy-in that, that, hey, this thing can be tweaked based on that input or it can be added. And I think then people are good, right? Because we could say, these four, and then we might say, you know what, we can't do four of these. We're only going to do two next year.
So do you think that's, you said forums, like that would be a separate meeting that we would set up, not a part of the next board meeting, but like a separate meeting?
I would leave it up to the group, what you come up with, but I think, I think that should be one of our, one of, one of our goals should be, you know, developing, developing this in, in in a way that the process is communicated and repeatable and people feel good about it.
Yeah, so like the next step, absolutely. I got you. Makes sense.
Could I convene you to be a part of goal four down there about planning for our future? Or we're just going to, I don't know, I don't want to, I just.
I don't know. I think to me, I don't know that it's necessarily a goal to do that. I think it's part of the process. That the next step should be, okay, we've come up with what we think are some chalkboard ideas that we want to put together. Now, let's make sure that we have some buy-in. We've listened to feedback about that from, from the community like that. So really a next step rather than another goal. Does that sound right, John?
Definitely.
Yeah, absolutely. That makes sense. So I think that we can get together and talk about that, rather than come back and propose maybe some ways to do that, to get that kind of checkoff.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, so we'll entertain a motion to adjourn this and we'll delay for five minutes for the start of the regular meetings. Everybody get to that? Okay.
Second?
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, we stay adjourned. Thanks, everybody. Great meeting.